Hey everyone, my name is Jaheer Arias. I am the Chair of C D seven. This is the public hearing for the Borough of Bronx. This is the New York City Department of City Planning's proposal for expanding the tax amendment and zoning. This is part of the City of Yes. This is the City of Yes Housing Opportunities Section. And we have a presentation from the Department of the New York City Department of City Planning here. And they will present what we have in our packets. So I'm just gonna read over what we have in our notice. Community Board Number Seven, the New York City Department of City Planning is proposing a citywide zoning tax amendment to expand opportunities for housing within all zoning districts. And across all fifty-nine of the city's community districts. These changes to the city's zoning resolution will enable more housing and a wider variety of housing types in every neighborhood from the lowest density districts to the highest. To the address, to address the housing shortage and high cost of housing in New York City. And with that being said, I'll put it over to Armando. I'm sorry.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us the space to present before the public hearing. We're checking the audio here. Right now, okay. Are we recording now? All right, so thank you again for being here in time. I'm gonna kick off this hearing with a brief presentation. This is a shorter version than the one that we explained a month ago on May fourteenth. Where we've fully explained with an introduction justifying the need for the this amendment to the zoning resolution and justifying with data the need to update the resolution to in order to create more equitable housing. City of Yes Housing Opportunity comes as a third and final City of Yes proposal and City Citywide Tax Amendment will change the zoning resolution to allow more equitable housing development. As I just said, these changes will enable a little more housing in every neighborhood by removing barriers to housing growth. This slide is a snapshot of what we will be going into. This tax amendment is the biggest pro-housing change that D C P has ever undertaken. And would touch the zoning for every single part of the city. The Universal Affordability Preference, or U A P, would allow bigger buildings for affordable housing in every medium and high-density zoning district. Across the city, the proposal would remove residential parking mandates, which are making housing more expensive. Proposal will allow, will also create more missing middle housing or low-rise apartments buildings in our low-density areas. And the proposal also aims to help homeowners in low-density neighborhoods by allowing them to add accessory dwelling units to their homes. There are also a range of smaller proposals, including enabling conversion of non-residential buildings, allowing more small and and shared apartments, and allowing for residential campuses to add highly limited buildings. You can see from this map that C V seven has low density as well as medium and high density. So the different proposals will apply to different areas of these neighborhoods. This slide shows where our low-density proposals will apply, showing in blue. And our medium and high-density proposals are shown in orange. Our citywide proposals will apply everywhere. Let's talk about the proposals for low-density districts. Exclusionary housing, sorry, exclusionary zoning rules have made it virtually impossible to build housing in many low-density neighborhoods, placing additional pressure on the high-density parts of the city to produce more housing. Bean Sticks Amendment would reintroduce modest buildings that are more naturally affordable than other types of construction and apartment buildings at a scale in which they can take advantage of existing affordability programs. Together, these changes allow for the creation of more housing in low-density areas without affecting neighborhood character. On the map that you see on the screen, all the parts in blue are sorry, I will, I will, we are talking about with my, with the majority being low-density, multifamily, with some two-family districts in Norwood and Bedford Park. Give me a, give me a second here and verify this. Yeah, sorry. This is the map where I was saying that the parts of where we are talking about with the majority being low-density, multifamily with some two-family districts. Wrong map, yeah. This is the right map. So our Tomah Center proposal aims to create more missing middle housing in low-density areas. Missing middle refers to a category of housing that's modest in scale and often affordable to middle-income residents. A once-come-type of housing that's not often built in this, in the city anymore. This proposal aims to really legalize mixed-use apartments or buildings with a ground-floor commercial use and a few stories of housing on top. Yeah, that picture, I'm sorry. The picture on the left helps illustrate what we are talking about. Instead of buildings on on the left that show just commercial on the ground floor, this proposal will allow two to four stories on, of housing on top of the commercial. This is a very classic New York City building type that exists along many low-density commercial corridors. Overlying complexing, overlying complexic zoning rules make it almost impossible to build new ones. These proposals streamline zoning rules, including restricted limits on floor area and height. So that it is once again feasible to build two-to-four-story housing above commercial ground floor. The map on the right shows where this applies to C V seven on East two hundred and fourth Street and the west end of West four hundred. Our second proposal for missing middle housing is transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented development would allow for low-rise buildings. There are three, these are three-to-five stories depending on the underlying zoning district on site. And the, on sites that there are near transit and meet specific criteria. These transit-oriented development rules will promote sustainability by adding housing in areas with good transit access. As we look at how this applies to C V seven, these will allow impact, I don't know, this is failing a lot, like. Is it me or?
Maybe try me. I mean.
Try to be taller.
No, I think you can, you can pick up your voice there.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe I was too close. As we look at, since the C V seven, this would allow impact. These will only impact the low-density area, showing purple on this map. The gray section of the map is what we call the Greater Transit Zone. It's important to take into account that these sites must be near transit. They must be over five thousand square feet. And on the short end of the block or facing the street over seventy-five feet wide. Sorry about the audio, it wasn't even, I was too close to it. The proposal aims to give homeowners more flexibility. Under this proposal, a one- or two-family home would be allowed to add a small accessory dwelling unit or A D U. There are a range of types of A D Us, including backyard cottages, garage conversions, and basement apartments. These small units would provide important housing options for small households, like a young person moving into their own place for the first time, or an elderly resident who wants to age in place. The proposal includes rules to ensure that A D Us are safe. For example, new basement A D Us would not be allowed in the coastal flood plain, and no A D Us would allow in the special coastal risk district. Areas of our city with the most of our flood, flood risk. Outside of these coastal areas, basement A D Us may be subject to additional regulations and review that are not only part of the, of this amendment. The same changes that enable A D Us can also help homeowners who don't want to add an A D U but need more flexibility to renovate their homes to meet their needs. Our research shows that many existing buildings are out of compliance. For example, what you see on the picture wouldn't be allowed to, to be built today. These non-compliances can cause problems for homeowners if they want to make simple changes for their home, for example, to renovate a kitchen. The proposal will fix these rules, which would have do, two effects. First, homeowners of existing buildings won't run into issues when they would go to make a small alteration. And second, and probably more, most, more important, they actually would be able to build a two-family home in a two-family district or a multifamily home in a multifamily district. Let's talk a little bit about the medium and high-density areas of our city. The proposal introduces the Universal Affordability Preference, or U A P. It would allow apartment buildings to be at least twenty percent larger. So, so long as all the extra space is occupied by permanently affordable or supportive housing. U A P is modeled after current rules that allow bigger buildings for affordable senior housing in some neighborhoods. U A P would allow incremental housing growth in neighborhoods and encourage affordable housing throughout the city rather than concentrating it in few neighborhoods. This map shows which districts have an existing senior housing preference today, shown in the line, in the light orange. Through the U A P framework, all forms of, of, sorry, all forms of affordable and supportive housing would be able to take advantage of the higher F A Rs already provided to affordable senior housing in these districts. However, there are a few districts that don't have the senior housing preference today. They are shown in dark orange on the map. In these areas, the proposal would create new F A Rs to enable the grow, the growth of affordable and supportive housing in every neighborhood. The orange on the map, on, on the right, shows where a twenty percent bump of F A Rs would apply on our, on our neighborhoods. So what does affordability mean for U A P? U A P would have an affordability requirement of sixty percent area median income. Or A M I. It is a measure of affordability established by the federal government. At sixty percent of A M I, or in other words, an income of seventy-six thousand for a family of, of three, U A P would serve more lower-income New Yorkers than, than the existing tools. U A P would replace the voluntary inclusionary housing program. But mandatory inclusionary housing would continue to exist and be mapped when there are significant increases in density. U A P would also serve New Yorkers at even lower income levels through income averaging. Income averaging means that instead of only including homes at the required affordability level, a building can include homes at a range of incomes that are average, they're required affordability. For example, a building could meet the U A P's sixty percent A M I affordability level by including a mix of homes at thirty, sixty, or ninety A M. This is a rendering of how U A P would play out. Without U A P, the building is built according to the base F A R for market-free housing. The result is this eight-story apartment building on the left. And with U A P, the building can be about twenty percent bigger, which for this example translates to additional two stories as long as the extra space is permanently affordable housing. U A P can make a big impact on our housing crisis. So let's talk about the citywide updates. We will end parking mandates. The proposal would make parking optional for new housing everywhere, following the example of many other major cities. Today, New York City requires new, new housing to include off-street parking even when there's no need. These mandates mean less space for housing and increased construction costs, which result in less housing. The diagram on this slide represent, represents how parking takes up a lot of space. Two parking spaces, for example, is equivalent to the size of a studio apartment. Parking will still be allowed, and we anticipate that developers will respond to market needs and continue to provide parking in areas where there is demand as they do right now. It is important to note that this proposal does not change on, on-street parking regulations, does not impose new parking maximums or restrictions on the amount of parking that can be built, and does not remove existing parking. Also does not force anyone to build no parking. There are additional proposals that will provide more housing and a wider range of housing types. First, conversions. Today, outdated rules prevent underused non-residential buildings like offices from converting to housing. This initiative would create, would change this. To do this, we would make a few changes to adaptive reuse regulations. For example, the proposal would enable conversions to all type of house, types of housing, including supportive housing, shared housing, and dorms. As shown in the image in the middle, the proposal would also allow small and shared apartments by eliminating the dwelling unit factor. A measure of the minimum average unit size in areas with good transit access. This would provide more housing opportunities for New Yorkers who want to live alone but do not have that option today. Currently, many people who want to live alone need to find roommates, and they occupy family-sized units. Enabling more small and shared apartments can relieve some of that pressure, so families can actually occupy the family-sized apartments. Finally, shown on the image of the right, previous developments often took place under under Towering the Park-style regulations called Hyde Factor. Although D C P has developed a more recent set of regulations for contextual buildings that have high limits and result in better design, some sites like Black Knight campuses can't access these new rules. The proposed changes would allow high-limited infill on sites that allow otherwise be forced to develop tall, skinny buildings or nothing at all. To conclude and move to the questions and answers, or in this case, the public hearing. The changes I walked through tonight are the most significant proposals in City of Yes Housing Opportunity. Overall, this tax amendment aims to create a little more housing everywhere. So that each neighborhood that's its part to address our housing needs and few neighborhoods don't feel the intense pressure of the crisis. It's not just about more housing, though. It's also about more types of housing, multifamily housing where it's currently not allowed because of, because of exclusionary housing, homes of different sizes to meet different people's need, and crucially, far more affordable and supportive hu, supportive housing. Thank you very much. We look forward for listening, for your questions. I hear is a, an email where you can direct contact us with any questions and concerns that you have. It's housingopportunity@planning.nyc.gov. And also I invite you to visit the, our webpage, nyc.gov/yeshousingopportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Caesar. Any questions?
Yeah, you mentioned that if this is an active, it's a citywide. It would have to be citywide. It's not that certain communities could opt out or ask for a waiver because our community has really been very heavily changed by a lot of new housing, a lot of incentive. So, when I've heard of it, read the little reading I've done on this, it seemed that the push is really to have more affordable housing and buy a rent district. But I think our rezoning has done for our community has actually made it really harder to get regular apartments, unsubsidized apartments. My, one of my concerns is that it's gonna be, we don't really have space and we really, it doesn't sound like a lot of this is what we need. Some of it we do. You know, I'd like to be able to pick and choose, but really, that's not our option here, is it? In other words, say we, we're, we're okay with, with putting in the, the three or four stories above a storefront. But we want, still want the housing, or we don't want the trend of, is there any way to pick and choose? In terms of, if we use one year, well, right.
Yeah, I mean, you, there's always an option to go, you know, and quite your comments on why not. But definitely, we would like, I guess, your conditions and your observations, so we can work on that. But I don't know if the question is that, or is, or is that for us to divide them and then talk like a certain communities or not, which is not possible.
Right, so nobody can opt out if that as an option, by, by negotiating style, okay? So opting out is not.
Oh, sorry. So when you say opt out, do you mean, I'm, I work with it.
Yeah, true.
And when you say opt out, do you need to say like, we don't wanna, if this happens, we don't want anything?
Right.
You, so nobody doesn't make you build anything, it just makes it eat, it's just like, okay. Hear this, we can do this. So we're not saying like, hey, you, private property owner, you have to build this. It's just giving you the flex to build it. But this is still under the purview of, we're not meant to withhold credit. We're just saying, okay, like this, like what he was saying with town center zoning. If, if the commercial first floor, then they have the ability to build a few more stories, but they're not, they're not taking that.
Right, but we cannot say we don't want this or that, this.
So that's part of, so that's, okay, but now I understand your question. So part of like what we're coming out here doing is we're getting comments around you. So there are certain parts of this entire total that you don't like, you can totally know that. Because we're still in the process of like gathering all the comments from different communities.
So, I mean, I, I can see merits of certain aspects, but you know, our concern is our community.
Yeah.
And you know, and.
And can we, can we provide actual, specifically notes to each of the section? So each board, you know, the entire city.
Nine, nine.
Nine boards. Were sent these tools, so we can compile information not of the entire amendment overall, but al, also average part of it. So yes, you can definitely say that you support a section of it, but you don't support another and explain also your reasons.
Yeah, but those would be what we're calling conditions. So it's like, okay, that's, I like this, but the condition that I have is like this, I don't think it's a, a big fit for city.
So we're, we're saying that that might be an option.
One more question.
I came late, so I might have missed something. So you keep saying affordability, and you're squeezing these buildings into the existing range that you have right now. We already have a lot of buildings coming up within the C V seven area, okay? So now you wanna squeeze in, I'm just talking about this area, because this is citywide, so it's not just our borough, it's everybody. So you're squeezing it in, in more buildings, you're saying affordability. But what I don't see, and what I have always advocated for, is mixed-income housing. Because do you have a space in there for our young professionals who make decent salaries? All the way down to the people who are making not as much money, to the middle-income family, to the seniors. And I don't hear anything in there, like I said, I may have missed it, about where you providing schools and other opportunities that we need in the neighborhood. Okay, we need more information for our seniors. We need more house, I mean, more schools and what have you for our younger people. We do have a lot of schools in the area, but a lot of them are overtaxed. Like I said, I may have missed some of that coming in late. But are you addressing any of those issues?
Well, well, I would answer the first part. This is specifically, we'll talk about the housing issue, yes. I mean, we work together with the different agencies that got well-worked through to provide infrastructure and education and health and other systems that are, that are needed. But this one in particular, it's focused on housing. That is the first part of the question. Second part of the question regarding there, mixed income.
Yeah, so that would, one of the typical things are what that speaking about is cost-conversal affordability preference. So that would allow income averaging, and it would use A V I. So instead of like the standard, it's like ninety percent A V I for the development, this would allow for the additional cost that is on top of, of these buildings that need to be vertical affordability preference. And we have an expert from each community that would speak about that, but that would take them via, I think, that you have. Yeah, I did, I can see that. Yeah, my name was Beth. I'm here from Public Corporation of Developments, on Health, Enter. H P and Housing Finance have a big question. So the U A P program, exactly, it's for, it's, you could have it in a hundred percent affordable building, where the you have a hundred percent affordable building, and then you wanna build it a little bit bigger. Absolutely, can do that. But it also, one of the benefits of this program is it also works for mixing up buildings. So you could have a building where it's fully market rate, it speaks to a lot of different incomes. And then the, just that additional twenty percent figure that you're building would be affordable. So it would be a range of incomes, everything from whatever you wanna set the floor at, of whatever the floor is set at, up to the market rate. So it definitely speaks to a lot of different kinds of all, like, but they can be used in many ways, not just affordable, fully a hundred percent.
Now, as far as veterans are concerned, because I work on the Veterans Committee. In, in H P D, in Mitchell Lama Housing, you always have a purpose in there for veterans. Does this plan include that also?
So the community preference, which I believe is what you're talking about, it definitely are one of the members of the community, community groups that get the community preference will still apply to the affordable units. The affordable units in these buildings will still go through H P D, Public Connect, B F L Hatways, and all of the same rules and regulations that currently apply to our marketing, including the community preference will apply to these units.
And that last thing is, and I was to the, parking. I think I heard this young man say that you want to cut down on parking in the buildings. It's not mandatory, but and the developers can include parking in the buildings. Because we need to have parking. There is no street parking. People in the Bronx do have cars. Seniors do have cars. Where are we supposed to put the cars? If you're building all this brand-new housing and you're not including any form of parking, that becomes even more of a problem.
And I was like, yeah, we've had that already. Where we're getting, I think it was forty spots under one of our buildings, and then I think it was De Blasio said, you don't need it, you can get more apartments by eliminating the parking, and that's what happened. And it's a nightmare.
It's a nightmare. You have no place to park. I live in an older Mitchell Lama building. And we probably one of the last built to have a huge amount of parking included when it came up in seventies. The building was, came up in seventy-four. And then they included a lot of parking in that. But everything that they have been building since, and they did come up under De Blasio, because I challenged people to mayor, I challenged the mayor at the time. What do you think we're supposed to do with cars? And his response was, oh, well, we have ample public transportation in New York City, and why would you need a car? I need a car because I want a car, and I need to be able to go where I want to go and not just be attached to public transportation, which is a little iffy in these days. So not saying that we can have parking is a real problem.
Yeah, we, first of all, let me acknowledge the, the, the concern, the concern. We, we don't, we're not saying that parking is not important. It is very important, but it's like mobility in general. But what is very urgent for a city like New York is housing. I'm not saying again that the parking is not important. It is, but what is, is housing. Like, there is so many people on the streets, that there's people just being displaced everywhere. Very close to us, to all of us here in this room are being displaced, or will be displaced very soon if we don't act immediately. So yes, parking is not a sprudian, a housing, and we need to rely also on the different agencies that, N T O T, federal, state, and local, meaning there will, will be, if that's are triggered by these mandates, but we do need to react to an immediate urgency, which is creating, creating.
Now, get the housing part out, but where are you gonna put it? Where are you gonna squeeze it all in? That's the other half of the question, because we are inundated with housing now. We need all of it. You need whatever you're proposing also. How are you gonna fit it in? Because we're all on top of each other right now. How is all gonna fit in? You're saying the stories, the three-to-five-story buildings. Where?
Also, with the transit, I'm sorry.
Just real quick to, to one of her questions. Right, one of the things that people aren't understanding, right, I guess, or not looking at. When they started the sliver building campaign, right, when they started allowing all these buildings, these small, the compact areas, we lost anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five parking lots. All these places that used to be parking lots, where they had parking lots, because they really couldn't do anything else with it. And now all of a sudden, they were able to put buildings. And because of that, ninety percent of the parking lots, right, what used to be lots in my neighborhood are gone, right? Eight places that used to be parking lots are now eight-story buildings, right? So they're not, they're not looking at that. So they're not, they're not looking at that, you know, and then they say, oh, there's only uh thirty five percent. Of car ownership on that block. You can take a walk down that block, every other plate, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, Texas.
Connecticut.
You know, all these other states, right, because New York State's insurance is so crazy, their cars registered someplace else. So when you look at D M V numbers, right? And you're like, oh, they don't need that many, try to drive around here at eight o'clock at night, see how many people learn how to in two, three hours doing the parking movie. Trying to find a parking spot. That's that's just to her parking parking question. Um, I know one of the things that was brought up to you previously was the A M I. Right, and the A M I number that you guys are talking around is affordable, really isn't affordable. Were you able to, or did you even research what the real A M I for this neighborhood is? Was that even a thought for contention?
So um part of this is because it's a citywide. Standard, we can't like, that would be called like a neighborhood study.
No, but but I'm just asking, did you guys look into it, right, because we all know it's a federal A M I number. Federal A M I number is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, everybody in this neighborhood makes six figures, right? I don't think so. Look at what happened to Mont Haven, they put all this affordable housing in Mont Haven, and what did that do? Throw everybody that lived in Mont Haven out of Mont Haven, because a lot of them were seniors, a lot of them on public assistance. So all the buildings that were coming up, although they were labeled as affordable. Nobody that currently lived in that neighborhood could afford that building, right? That's why now you go to Yonkers, and they're all living in Yonkers and the row houses in Yonkers, because there's nowhere left for them to live in the Bronx that they can afford. That's why we asked you guys to research those numbers, right, because it looks pretty when you say for big affordable. But you gotta make at least sixty thousand dollars a year. Minimum, like that's for that's scraping the bottom of the sixty thousand dollars a year. There are a lot of families in this neighborhood, a lot of families in the Bronx that don't make that number, right? Um, making six figures. Isn't a common thing you see in the Bronx. You know, but 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 you're building these buildings that are pricing. Residents from that neighborhood out of that neighborhood. Go down to Mont Haven, nobody down there that used to live down there. Everybody, all those buildings, two hundred, twenty five hundred dollars a month, right? Three thousand dollars a month, Fred, and these are people that their monthly income is eight hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, what um what we answered last time and we we. We we agree that we're going to talk about the the whole the whole month of this time is. Why um why using A M I um when we talk about affordability? Um, and before I, before we we jump into answer that, um, it is important to to remember. Just for for the people that were not in the last session, is that. Uh, the park city planning and zoning doesn't really control anything that has to do with A M I. What we control is that in the zoning resolution that we there. There were affordability and whatever if uh reveals if, it's actually there and it's enforced. But what is an A M I for certain um neighborhood or in general, we cannot really. Control, like that's not something that we're preparing this.
We even care.
We are prepared, well, we are preparing this field for whenever that is more realistic, if it's gonna happen, it will be there. So I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit.
Like, yeah, we're very aware that A M I is still matching comes in. The Bronx broadly and in New York City on and a whole like that's affect that no one can dispute, um. But like part of the problem is when we're talking about building affordable housing. We are at H P D, we're reliant on federal dollars to do that. Most of the subsidy that goes in to the H P D affordable housing that we build. Comes from the federal government, and therefore we have to follow the federal government's measures. And they have shown that it's A M I and the way they measure A M I is at the metro aerial level, not at the neighborhood level. So they're looking not just at New York City, but they're looking at Westchester, Rockland. The Long Island, like, and like, we know the problem, like. But we can all agree on that, no one wants, no one thinks a hundred thousand dollars is moderate income, right, that's fair, um. At least in certain neighborhoods, um. But like what this proposal does, what the universal affordability reference does, is it's getting us at least somewhere. It's getting us better than what we had before, which was the old voluntary inclusionary program. Which says every single affordable unit that was built through that program had to be eighty percent A M I. Eighty percent A M I right now for family three, hundred and eleven thousand dollars, like, that's a lot. Um, but through this new program, we're setting the average. At sixty percent of A M I, which for family three is eighty three thousand dollars. But because it's the average, I know, it's still a big number. Because it's an average, we can build things through this program at a much lower affordability level than you could through the old G I H program.
One of the things that was done, right, during during the performance for the Jerome Cromwell project.
Yeah.
Right, the Jerome Carbon. The Jerome, the Jerome Cromwell project brought a lot of housing for that area between Draymond and Yankee Stadium. Right, a lot of buildings still being built, but there were a lot of buildings that were built. And a high percentage of them used the A M I, right, the federal A M I and what have. Nobody that lives there can afford to rent those apart, right, that's great, but. What the city council person from that district did was they were able to set aside or make buildings. That did encompass people that were from that, that were at that lower A M I. Seniors, right, they, what what are you gonna do, once you're retired, once you're, what you make is what you make, you're not gonna go get a second job. That's why the McDonald's right now, they're supposed to be college and high school students, and it's all seniors, because they don't have money to pay their rent.
Right.
Right? But nobody is looking at those numbers, you know, like nobody cares. You go down to Mont Haven, right, it's great, it looks like Tribeca, it's beautiful, beautiful lobbies, beautiful, but what about the people that live there?
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's all I'm saying.
So on the the near transit, like you talk about.
What is the definition of near transit?
Near transit, so that would be half a mile uh from either from generally train tracks or railroad. And I also do like wanna mention uh the map that was up is a bit of a misnomer, so that's just, you have, in order to. Be able to take advantage of transit or any development, you would have to be all the different breaks here.
A half mile would be like ten streets, then you go off.
Yeah, so this, um, not all, that, because it makes it look like the entire district is transit or age development, that is not true. So that is, this only shows places that are near transit, so that half mile that I gave you. There's still, it, we're not looking at places, we don't have anything on the map that says, oh, this site is for sure like above. Like five thousand square feet or on the short end of a block or facing a street over thirty five.
Just get your heads up, and C B seven kind of does, because we have Metro North on one side.
Yeah.
You have the four line, you have the D line, then you have Metro North on the other side.
Yeah.
So logistically.
No, no, no.
C B seven kinda is the whole C B.
Yeah, you're you're within half a mile of transit everywhere.
But I said you have to be all of those.
But you have to be the site has.
Right, because yeah, they, and you should put up. They're theoretically perhaps bigger buildings that we have, as long as they are the five thousand a day are also on that axle.
Well, not bigger buildings, but not provide parking because of the transit.
Right, but also bigger building necessarily, right?
It'll, it would be like a.
You can tear it down.
Not necessarily, because a transit, this has to do with the parking.
No, this is separate from the parking.
Right, this has to do more like the. But the uh higher density has to do more.
Yeah, it's getting more buildings, more people in closer to the transit. Yeah, just saying, right now, you really don't have fighters much, well, it depends, I mean, you think you're bad for a lot, now we do have some built there.
So how does the uh. That U A P uh increase of twenty percent in affordability. Works with a pass of pride development that doesn't need a treaty for.
So take, oh, so you're asking if they're already building, can they do it?
Right, so if I have my own property and I wanna build higher, right? Without having to comply to the sixty percent A M I, can I build?
So you would not get the bump and it would still have to be, uh, so that's for, this is for like medium to higher density. So that would be R six to R ten, there is no R ten in the history, I think it's mostly like. Our, what, like, five seven, so if you were in those, you would, you would not get the bump, so.
Okay, so you would have to go through the H P D spending.
So if you go, if you're doing affordable housing, then yes, but if you're just doing for market rate. Back on you, you're not getting any like help from any government, that's.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so there's like kind of three different pathways, there's one, there's. You just wanna build market rate housing, you don't want any affordability in it, then you would just get whatsoever the base F A R in zoning. No bump, can't be a bigger building than what it can currently be today. If you wanna do market rate housing and then you wanna add affordable to that, you know. Twenty percent of that base floor area, you can add additionally, let's say it's. Hundred units could add another twenty units, and those twenty units have to be affordable. They get a regulatory agreement with H P D that runs with the life of the building, that keeps it affordable, those twenty units affordable. So you go from a hundred unit building to a hundred, let's say, in here. Uh, or the other option, in case you get a hundred percent affordable building with H P D. Again, can be down to a hundred and twenty units, but all of the units.
Right, and and, okay, perfect, so I just wanted to clarify that for.
Yep.
And the, um, so. I know that the voluntary inclusionary housing is being. Done away with, which is what kind of provided a lot of these units originally, uh, so if you have a building. You have a base, and then you add twenty percent base with the eighty percent A M I still save. So now they're bringing down the A M I. Uh, to sixty percent, which is more affordable, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
And you can do a mix.
And you can do.
Thirty percent.
Like we have voluntary and the mandatory inclusionary housing that already exists. You always do a mixed use building, it's just up to developers to decide what kind of funding they want to put there. Pursued, and then that's how they are able to build either a hundred percent affordable or mixed building, so. I think that as a community board, we should be a little bit more saying. This is not a building that we want anymore, right, we don't want this kind of market. Do I want more of a mixed use building, right? So I think we have, I think we have.
Mix in.
Mix in, yes, mix in from buildings, uh, we can say that.
Yeah, we've been asking for that for years. Because we don't want to drive out any of our neighbors. We want our young professionals, we want our seniors, we want people who are in the lower income. They've lived in the neighborhood too, so to Eddie's point. You can create these neighborhoods where the people who've lived there for the last fifty, sixty, seventy years, you're running them out of the neighborhood. Because the rents are not affordable for them anymore. And then for the young professionals, if you cabinet at a certain point. And they make substantial more salaries than some of us did years ago. They can't live in that neighborhood either, so then quality of life for the whole neighborhood changes. And we want to have that complete quality of life neighborhood. Maybe it's wishing for a start.
Mm-hmm.
But I wish for a start, so I think we should have it all. So I don't want to just be sent in one direction that's gonna exclude a lot of other people. Who've lived in this neighborhood, I've lived in this neighborhood for a while too. So it could get to a point where you're telling me, well, I'm sorry, there's no room for you no more, so you need to truly go someplace else, and where would I be going?
Well, that is why we're creating the university affordability preference, that's all about. It used to, like, the same rule used to be already for only senior housing. And now the same rule will apply without affecting the senior housing production um to any type of housing. But of course, as long as it's affordable.
Right, so it's it's a, it's a better program where they're introducing, I think, overall than what exists. Because it it creates a lower. And what it was.
Because before, what was eighty percent?
It was eighty percent, it really depended on what, they had like two options with a voluntary.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and they had to, that the developer could choose which option.
Mm-hmm.
They wanted to do. Now, it seems like they're only gonna be due to this one option, if they want the affordability. Yeah, right.
So that's what you're saying, what he's repeating to us.
Yeah, yeah, and we we put the the A M I to sixty, I know, A M I to sixty percent, but again, you can be a mix. And you can also provide thirty percent A M I, which is more.
Well, you have to get to fifty percent, so you know, you wanna go down to thirty percent A M I, as long as you get to the sixty, so then, you know, thirty.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And then also to your point, um, U A P is one of the um proposals for the media, the higher density, and you're also um. Enabling homeowners, looking to enable to that homeowners can have, because as well as you, because you make a very good point of people wanting to stay in their neighborhood. And it's difficult for them, it's like, I love this neighborhood, I can leave my mom, but you know, like, you're not able to build something like where it actually can live, so. Having the ability to have our issues as sort of optimize on a short foot, um, because we're only. You know, based on the building prices, also the money that we're looking at, because. You know, being able to enable that can do the difference between someone leaving the neighborhood versus being. So I did just like wanna mention that.
Mm-hmm, so this would be studio one, two, and two bedroom apartments, no three bedrooms, or a few, a few three bed.
Maybe, um, it would be a mix, yeah, it would be, um. Whatever gets developed, there's no, there are no.
Yeah, it's a restriction, and we usually at this, in the B C T side, we move the racial report that you might be related with. That also um gives us information on one of the requirements in the, in the specific neighborhood. And we we push the developers to to target that necessity.
So I just wanna uh just reinforce, my, my issue is more the. The young professionals that are, let's say, living a lot. You look at the incomes, they're really not included in any of it, they're single people. So they're still not really addressing, I think, our concerns about people keeping people in the neighborhood.
So you're saying feed incomes. Marking low?
Same, yeah.
Okay, so I I wanna clarify again, you could have a building where, where they have a hundred unit building. That's what, that's what the zoning says you can build, if you wanna build market rate, you can have a hundred unit market rate building. Income, whatever the market will bear, no incarceration. Now, if you wanna take advantage of this program, you could build a hundred and twenty unit building. And twenty of those hundred and twenty units would need to be affordable. And meet kind of an income mix that averages out to sixty, but the other hundred units could still stay market rate.
I guess we, I just doesn't seem like we're seeing that in the area though, and then we have one. You know, we have people that work a month, a few of them want to stay in the neighborhood, I think there's one building that considered market rate.
So you are arguing for more market rate housing?
Well, it's or or higher, you know, we have people that. You know, don't have a large family, but their income is good, and they wanna stay in the area, and I don't, just don't think.
But there is no, friends, that there is no, like, there is options for for those.
Well, there's.
Sales if they want to stay in the neighborhood, if there is enough production of.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify something, um, what this is. You know, this is not a change into all the excess stuff, this is just the opportunity to change the zoning. The zoning issues that we have in order to create the housing that's needed. Or to avoid a bigger crisis further down the line, if I'm reading this correctly, you guys correct me if I'm wrong. So we we, we're so used to that when something like this comes to our plate, we're thinking about the the bigger picture right now, this is just. A bottom line start to try to avert a bigger crisis than what we already have. So we have to think about it in that, in that sense, and this is just, just a a change in the zoning to allow. Us to avoid a complete housing crisis now, once these developers have the opportunity. To build in our district, then they have the option of going in this plan. Which allows all of this, or they can go market rate, that's a choice that they they're gonna have to make. And then, of course, like always, they will have to come to the board and we will have to go through that process itself. But right now, all of this is just changing the way the zoning reads in order to avert the housing crisis. Is that clear?
Yeah, and I think that's the piece that most of us has been missing, and I'm glad you said that, however. That we're thinking of it in terms of who we're fitting into the neighborhood and what's affordable. That we're thinking of it in terms of who we're fitting into the neighborhood and what's affordable for the neighborhood. But basically, this whole conversation is about zoning regulation, correct?
So and I also do wanna emphasize, zoning does not make it compulsory, so these changes. You can opt in, like, if you have, let's say you're a homeowner, you don't have to build.
But you're, isn't it will financially like advantageous in terms of building?
Yeah, sure, and there are also like different standards for like accessory volumes, and I just use that one as an example, because that's like a very individual one, so, you know. Like, you can have a basement one, you can have this one, but it really depends on the design of the building, so if it's like a row house, you can only have a basement one because you'd be. A way to get to the street. But if you have, you know, solo house, it can be attached, it just has to be in back of the house, and then there are certain setbacks and high regulations. But yes, it's because it's, this is just through zoning regulations, so we're not saying that those, you have to do this, but it's just like fever. Some of the proposals.
And then I know we have many people in the in the audience, if you have any questions, just, you know, raise your hand and go collapse.
Just as a clarification to your point, um. Just so you know, because I know where where you live, right, the North Bronx, Machu Picchu Parkway, Webster, uh Villa Avenue. Ninety percent of buildings that are being built in that area are all supportive housing, right, so there's, that's skewing the whole, the whole thing, but.
Yeah, well, supportive, is that what you did?
There there's a high percentage of supportive housing that's got built. Villa Avenue, Webster Avenue, tho- those are the buildings that have been built for that area. Just so you're aware, like, right here between Morris Avenue, Creston Avenue, between Bedford Park to Kingsbridge. There's at least eight to twelve buildings that have been built within the last year, year and a half. And ninety percent of those are all market rate buildings, those aren't, those aren't gonna be supportive housing. Because like you said, there's a lot of supportive housing that did come to this area, they're now opening and. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of uh program housing, program-related housing and um. Shelter-type buildings, but in the buildings that are being built. Um, a lot of those sliver buildings, a lot of them are gonna end, and looks like so far, looks like they're gonna end up being market rate buildings. So there are those apartments coming in here, they're not as abundant as the, some of the supportive housing and that had been the trend. Right, but those other buildings are popping up, especially along the four line and the D line.
Any other questions? No? Okay, with that being said, I guess we can end the public hearing, it's six twenty-seven, I can move into the board business. Really quickly, and if you guys wanna stay for, see if any other board members come in for the meeting and have an expression.
Thank you.